All right, good evening. I like to call the Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024 Douglas Plan and Board Meeting to Order. Time is 7:03. Quick, we're on the table for attendance, Jacob Schultzberg.
Meg Schlesman here.
Mike DeRose here.
Richard Preston.
Jacob Gaddick.
Mike Greco here.
Mike Zwicker here.
And Mr. Marx and Mr. Sokret are excused. A and Rs, we have an A and R plan for 212 West Street, possible votes.
So what we have is A and R, that was, we already had a variance for, which is cited on the plan. The variance is, was, variance was to reduce the lot size, which is something we obviously can't review with A and R. But this is variance has been applied to the plan to make this a building lot from, to reduce it from the 90,000 square foot lot area to 83,000 square feet. The frontage is all sufficient, it's on an adequate public way, I'd recommend endorsement for the plan.
Okay, Board, any questions or comments?
No, read through it, it looked very reasonable.
Okay. Post Lot A, what the... The question is, what A again dividing, like, the house is the property line? Or are those just measurement lines?
Those are measurements.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it looks like that's a lot.
Dividing lines now in the middle.
Okay. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to endorse the A and R plan for 212 West Street.
So moved.
Second.
May be Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Greco, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing as none, plan is approved. Are endorsed, I should say. That was one we were signing, so. How we going to?
Thank you.
All right, 7:00 PM, public hearing, amendment to zoning bylaws, section 3.3, accessory dwelling units and appendix A, possible votes.
Did you wave the reading of the hearing notice?
Uh, that's a quick one, I'll read it. All right, in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Town of Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024, beginning at 7:00 PM. In the Douglas Municipal Senate Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass, for the purpose of reviewing proposals and amendments to befalling Town of Douglas zoning bylaw. 7:00 PM, amendment to section 3.3, accessory dwelling units and appendix A of the zoning, Douglas zoning bylaws. The complete text of the proposed zoning articles can be obtained and/or reviewed during normal business hours at the Douglas Town Clerk and the Douglas Planning Board, both located at 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Public hearing is now open, and Mr. Benoit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just join the Zoom here.
Just a quick reminder for everyone, just to speak up, so the microphones and all those in attendance can hear you.
Okay. Zoom going, join, let's go. There it is. Okay. So, according to the, the state, the, um, Maury Haley passed the Affordable Homes Act on August 6th, which gives towns, uh, sorry, allows, uh, accessory dwelling units by right in all communities in residential zones. And there's no restriction on the quantity for ADUs that you can put on your property. So this gives towns the opportunity to enact the zoning bylaw prior to the enactment of the state regulation, which goes into effect on February 2nd. So the towns have to pretty much scramble to get these bylaws in place to try to protect the town from, you know, I guess, the overabundance of the ADUs, right? So what this bylaw does is it applies these in the residential zones by site plan review, so that gives the planning board the ability to regulate, you know, parking and certain aspects of the, of the ADUs. But it also makes it so that's a special permit for any, any more than one ADU. The language in the bylaw has been approved and reviewed by Town Council, it's been through tech review, it's been the select board. The Fin, Finance Committee voted for it last night to put it on the town meeting warrant, which has had to go through our 40A, Section 5 process to hold a public hearing to allow for public to comment on it. And if the Board has any questions or amendments to the bylaw, as written, this is vetted by council already. The one thing that was added recently was... Make sure it made it in here. Oh, hold on, let me pull this up. Douglas ADU, council, sorry, something else added, October 7th. Pull up on the screen. As soon as I can share. Something on the use schedule is line four, any restrictions of the use of existing legal ADUs in town are effect, upon the effective date of this bylaw, null and void. Those restrictions are the restrictions that they have to be in laws or related, because that's no longer in the state statute for ADUs, they don't have to be related or blood, blood related. So this would effectively make those restrictions on prior special permits null and void. Those then special permits, once they expire, they become as, they become grandfathered ADUs, um, allowed by right as is.
Through the chair, I got a couple of questions. Number one, we're allowing more than one. How can you do that when you have a maximum square footage? Is that per unit, or that per total? It must be per total.
Per unit.
Per unit.
Well.
Yeah, per unit, if it's, if it's going to be more than one unit, they need a special permit.
Right, but what I'm getting at is the state law specifies no more than 900 square feet.
Yep.
Or half the dwelling size.
Right, whichever is.
Period.
Per unit.
So.
No? It's whichever is less.
So what I'm getting at is, now you're gonna start popping up, you could have four units of 500 square feet on your property.
It's 900 or less, depending on the size of your house, like if you have.
You could have, so you have a small place, you could have four, 500 square foot units on your property.
If you get three different special permits, right.
Why do we have to have that on there? Shouldn't it only be one?
Yeah, they're only allowed one by right with site plan review, and any additional ADU requires.
Is the state requiring that?
Yes.
Be put on there?
Yes. They're allowing towns to regulate these by site plan review for the one unit that's allowed by residential use, and any more can be regulated by special permit.
So through the chair, will we have definition in terms of what the special permit requirements will be for additional ADUs?
Yep, yep, they'll have to conform to a special permit requirements of our zoning bylaw, and the additional requirements set forth in section 3.3.5. Anything else that's on the special permit requirements of the zoning bylaw under section 9.3?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I could, as a follow-up to this. So I understand where you're coming from, Michael, because this could really get kind of blown up.
Yes.
So one by right.
Yes.
Two or more by permit.
Mm-hmm.
Allowed or required by the state? Allowed by the state or required by the state?
They allow.
Are we, are we required to allow more by special permit?
It's, I don't think it's a requirement, it's more along the lines of they allowed local jurisdiction to apply a special permit to anything more than one.
So the question is, should we allow it if it's not required, more than, more than one, by special permit?
If we do, it's kind of creating an uncontrolled little chaos. So folks can put more than one ADU on their lot by right, there's gonna be three principal uses on one structure, on one lot, that's pretty.
No, but it'd be just one by right, period.
Right.
That's how it could be written, and no more.
No, we have, we can't, we can't outright prohibit it, we have to allow by special permit.
So it is, so it is required.
Yes.
We can't prohibit, right.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at, through the chair. Exactly, it's one of these deals where, if that's the case, then why are you having a restriction on size? Because you're not sizable, why restricted to 500 square feet? You're gonna be putting up 2,000 square feet of ADUs, which is bigger than the house that you're.
They still have to go through the process.
They have to get a special permit from us, and it has to conform with character of the neighborhood and, and all those criteria.
It's not necessarily an open book.
Right.
It pretty much is, if you have setback, and you have the SEPTEC.
If we don't have this, if we don't have this regulation in place, it's gonna be a free-for-all where folks can just put these wherever they want.
I don't, I don't like the idea of it being on there. I can understand the one, by right.
Which, which area are you talking, Mike?
First page, number, on 3.3.2, use schedule, number two. So what it is, is you're allowing half the size of the dwelling, or 900 square feet, but you can have multiple ADUs. So you just exceeded the size of your house, of your dwelling.
Right.
So, so your ADUs now are more square footers than your house.
It's possible, if the Board wanted to grant the special permit for that, but that puts us in, under the town's control, instead of just allowing it by right.
To the chair, it seems like the tail's wagging the dog. I don't know that that was the intent of the Affordable Homes Act.
Yeah.
By doing this, they just wanted, I think the intent was to easily have one more rental, one more unit.
Correct. Because now all of a sudden you just open up a rental agreement partnership, you get a full places, they're all rented out, and you're living in your house, and you have four ADUs in your backyard, and you're renting them all.
Through the chair.
Mr. DeRose.
If we modify the zoning requirements for ADU, uh, ADUs to specify setbacks, spacing from the primary dwelling and from each other, then we can make it less likely that there'll be ridiculous campsite of ADUs.
You have two acre lot, your setback's 25 feet on the side, you're 50 feet from the rear, you can pile in a lot of small houses.
Yeah, but it still has to meet the.
But they have to be.
You could go along with the characteristic of the neighborhood.
Again, on the enforcement of this, other way this has been implemented, do we have the right to stop it?
Yes.
Doesn't?
So, yeah, do we?
Yes.
And doesn't, doesn't.
Then why are we even pushing for it?
The policy is set to replace Patchwork's zoning relations, regulations across the state with a uniform law that allows homeowners on single-family lots to add these small units without needing a special permit or variance, unless they want to add one, more than one. They want to add more than one, they need a special permit.
Doesn't our existing requirement state that it has to be within a certain feet, number of feet of the primary dwelling?
All gone, all, all that's going away, that's what I'm getting at.
We can't, we can't put that back in.
No, we can't.
Oh, okay.
Through the chair, Matt, one other question about the ADUs, do they, the ability to build a garage, is there any restriction on size for that?
So the gross square footage is included with the garage? Garage is part of the gross square footage.
It's not a livable space, so it can't be considered.
It doesn't state that in the, it just says the construction of a new garage to serve an EDU shall require a special permit. How could you have a garage in your, if you're at 900 square feet max? And your garage is 400 square feet? You're gonna have a 500 square foot ADU, if 900 is your max, assuming that your house is twice.
Right.
Twice that size.
Garage is attached to the house, the EDU, then it's part of it, so that has to be part of it, it's not a separate structure.
And, through the chair, going back on what you said, line one, that basin, all the measurements on the principal, single-family dwelling.
Right.
Does that include garage, or just your livable space? So if you're including it in one and not in the other, which, which way are you going here?
You're not including your garage.
Correct.
Gross floor area likely includes garage, I believe.
Doesn't really matter, because it's 900 max.
Right, 900 max.
That's what we always had.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it's, so that.
We've had 900 livable space.
Yeah, not, not including.
We just worry about livable space.
Right.
Correct.
As it is for your primary residence.
Correct.
So do you want to confirm that, the garage versus livable, for?
Well, they're not calling it out on the first paragraph, so it can't be. How can you have it not included in the first, but yet you're trying to include it in the back?
And one thing I'm confused about is how it says, um, ADUs are allowed as a matter of right. It said something about without a permit, or. But then, on the second page, 3.3.5, all ADUs are required to obtain a site plan approval.
The site plan approval is a by-right mechanism, it's a mechanism for control for parking and design standards.
So every one has to, no matter what, come to the planning board for a site plan review?
Yes.
But it's just on a special permit?
Right, for the first one, the site plan review, anything more needs a special permit.
Okay.
I think, through the chair, I think a lot of these are going to have issues with SEPTIC anyway. Are you, are you going to want to put in, bring your SEPTIC system up to current requirements to build another 900 square foot dwelling?
If you're making 2,000 a month on it, you sure would.
That's one of the big questions that I raised with the state, and they still don't have an answer for that.
Yeah.
This thing was gonna put in without thinking of that.
Yeah.
It's one of those things. How they're gonna do it remains unknown at this time. It might be something we have to amend in the springtime, but getting this in place for the fall makes it so that there's not a total free-for-all of this.
Which I understand, but it's just too bad, and, and that's where it's coming down to, where if they're meeting other requirements, they have the land, have the space, you could put four, five, six of these on your property, build a SEPTIC system to accommodate all of them, because the rent income is gonna be there. And now you just open up a mini subdivision without, by right, on a special permit. This is what you're, this is what you're allowing that to take place.
Well, it's not us, it's the state.
Well, it is, it goes both ways though. That's why that one verbiage, I don't like the idea of multiple.
Through the chair, the, the site plan approval stipulates the parking and access. So, they're going, if, if somebody wanted to build a cluster of ADUs in their backyard, they would have to put in a road, or have common parking up front.
Uh-uh, you could have it next to your ADU.
Well, in order to get back there, then the highway department could say, well, you've got four houses trying to access the street from this 15-foot wide road. That doesn't cut it.
Sure would, through the chair, you have a driveway opening of 24 feet, 20 feet, you can turn alongside of it, just keep going down in the back of your property. You put four of them up, they all come into the one driveway, drive out going to the road. Ain't no big deal.
It's not, it doesn't become a road at that point?
No. And this is where this gets real complicated.
So what this effectively does at the state level is this makes all of our single-family zones into two-family and multifamily zones. That's what this does.
Yeah.
It's not, not really good for single-family homeowners, right, that want their privacy and whatnot. So, we have to, we have to do something to it. Like, this, this is all coming at us like, like 100 miles an hour, and we have to do something to regulate it, and this is.
Yeah, this is our start.
Right.
I, I just wish we had Town Council or somebody really on the input on number two.
Town Council weighed in on it already, and they're okay with the language here.
He's okayed with it, but was he asked, do we have to have it on or not have it on?
Yeah.
Specifically.
It has to be in there according to the state regulations, either by special permit, yep.
I like to see the state.
Yep, I can share it right there.
So they can't clearcut the yard to do it, because it has to minimize tree changes.
Well, I think the confusion is, if we don't have this, they can just do it.
Correct.
But we have this.
100% with you.
And they still have to come to the planning board for the special permit if they want to do more, and they, they have to meet the special permit criteria.
Right, but what is the criteria? There is none yet.
There is, it has some, there's a whole list of stuff that we have to go through for a special permit.
Yep, yep. On the special permit criteria.
Which is, I mean, if you want to find out, go over it.
Traffic flow, safety, social economic, community needs, adequate received utilities, non-service services, neighborhood characters, social structures, impacts on natural environment, potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax basis, and those are just the special permit criteria. They also have to meet the site plan review criteria.
And then zoning as well.
Right.
So it's not, it's not just a complete free-for-all, it's stuff that they have to meet, but they, if we don't have it, then they can just do it anyway.
Correct.
Rather do it wherever they want.
And through the chair, and I agree, but what I said, where they're pushing this out, you don't think that's gonna get overruled here in the near future? I make about a lot of it will be, where they're gonna say, okay, we're gonna ease up. You have all these restrictions? No, you're gonna ease up on them if it concerns an ADU, just like they're doing this.
There's a lot of building code issues with this, like existing ADUs don't have like a fire separation wall from their, from their primary dwelling. Those then become pre-existing, non-conforming grandfathered, they're not gonna meet the code for a two-family separation.
Correct.
Like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things they didn't think of when they did this.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're kind of beat to the fire here, gotta put something in, or else we can't control it at all.
No, and I've been saying, I agree, but I'm just letting it be known, and letting everybody know what's going on here.
But in, at the end of the day, it's coming from the state, and we're, we're trying to protect the town from what the state's forced.
Through, through the chair, is, is this some language for the fall town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
Were you able to get this in that quick?
Yeah.
Yeah, we needed it in that quick.
Turned it around in September, and vetted it out as, to as many parties as we could.
Yeah.
Okay.
Comes in effect in February?
Yeah. And we won't have a meeting before February, so it has to be in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone in the audience, questions regarding the accessory dwelling units? Anyone online with questions regarding the accessory dwelling units? No, Mark, Mark, Mark doesn't care about accessory dwellings. All right, um, so what are we, what are we looking for, Matt, and what's the, we do, do we have to send it back to the Board of Selectmen, or?
This will be our report to town meeting at this point. So we're looking for a motion to amend the zoning bylaws respect to accessory dwelling units per Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5. As amended, because this draft doesn't have the language that I read earlier, under use schedule 3, 3, 2, 4, any restrictions on the use of existing legal ADUs in town are upon the effective date of this bylaw null and void.
If I can, through the chair, in our bylaws, didn't we have in there, when the accessory apartment was not to be used anymore, had to be turned back to its normal state? Does that need to get removed?
That's what, any of those restrictions would then be wiped out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure, because this would null and void all that stuff.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, um, what are we doing for voting tonight, Matt, how's it work tonight?
Um, you have five members, so the ultimate's not.
Okay.
Another question was the, should minimize tree vegetation, soil removal, and grade changes, just, it's kind of vague. I don't know how you can really, because you still gotta put a foundation in, and.
Yeah, I mean, they still have to meet all the criteria here for our regular site plan review, so these are just kind of additional. What was in the draft by law.
Okay.
I don't have any issues with it.
And we can use that language there to help with.
Clearcutting.
Basically, the concern, when they come for a special permit for putting more, is that language is in there to minimize.
Right.
Through the chair, will they have to comply with stormwater?
Only if they're in the MS4 regulated area, depending on when that bylaw gets enacted.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Is there any, anyone else, any other questions or comments, or?
I need a motion, just.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, I will close the public hearing. So the public hearing for the accessory dwelling unit is closed.
Looking for a motion to approve the amendment to zoning bylaws, section 3.3, by, by deleting section 3.3 in its entirety and replacing it with the following language for 3.3 accessory dwelling units as presented with the amendment to item 3.3, point 3, excuse, 3.3.2, point 4. Any restrictions on the use of legal ADUs in town are upon effective date of this bylaw null and void.
So moved.
Second.
May be Mrs. Wicker, second by Ms. Schlesman, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. Moving right along, 7:15, time is 7:29, public hearing continued, SNL Realty Trust, application for site plan review and special permit, SPR-240904 and SP-240904, off Davis Street, possible votes. Mr. Allen?
Mark Allen here, can you guys hear me?
Yes, you can, can't see you, I don't know if that's on purpose, but we can hear you.
Uh, it is somewhat on purpose, I'm in the town of Clinton, uh, at my daughter's field hockey game, so I apologize, you know, for seeing the field.
Okay.
We did win, netball won. But I just wanted to let the Board know that, um, all of the items that Quinn Engineering had brought up, all 15 items have been acknowledged and addressed, and we do have a clean letter. So I don't believe there's anything outstanding that needs to be done technically, and we're hoping, if there are any other questions, maybe a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Quinn, if you can just confirm, or any comments or questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, Kevin Quinn with Quinn here, here behalf of the Board. Yeah, what Mark says is correct, um, they've resolved all the comments that I had, or, or I have no further comments.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Benoit, you have any updates or anything?
Kind of the last thing that we, that was discussed was the enters to the driveway, they're not being in need for a culvert, could you guys just kind of talk about that?
Sure. If Mark can, or I'd, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, Mr. Quinn.
I had commented that, um, at the base of the road, it may be necessary to put a culvert in, so that the, to pass drainage under the driveway.
Okay.
Um, the plan seemed to suggest there was a fair amount of fill going in that area. Mark took a look at the site, he reached out to me and said, you know, there's not really a lot of fill going on, and it's true. It was kind of a, a little bit of a, um, a misleading interpretation of the, of the toe bowl. So there really isn't a lot of fill, and there's really no need for a culvert, so I, I agree with Mark that a culvert's unnecessary.
Okay. The highway could still recommend it too, for their permit, if, if need be anyways, too, for the driveway.
It would be difficult to put a culvert in that location. If you're not building it up, then you're putting a culvert in the road, in the, in the ground.
Yeah.
Wouldn't really be.
So, so as now, it's, it's not needed, it's not planned, it's not on the plan, okay.
There's no culvert now to begin with.
No, there isn't.
Yeah.
Board, any questions for Mr. Quinn or Mr. Allen?
Looks good, appreciate it.
Okay, this is a public hearing, does anyone have any comments, questions, concerns regarding the plan for off Davis Street, SNL Realty Trust? No one in the attendance?
Nope.
No one online? I don't know what Matt went to run for, so I'm gonna just hold back until he has something.
Sorry, so I'll get the file.
Okay. And do we want to discuss any, uh, special conditions or anything? We can do that with the hearing clause, right?
Yes.
But we might need feedback.
Could you just ask the applicant if there were any waivers requested, about the site plan or.
Could you just ask the applicant if there were any waivers requested about the site plan or special permit?
There are waivers.
Yeah, there are, right? They're in your review letter.
Yeah. Yeah, just go over the waivers, just to confirm. Where is the list of the waivers?
Second page of our review. There's a waiver of site lighting. There's a site lighting of the building. Took place during daylight hours, no lighting proposed.
Okay. Should we find?
They did propose some vegetation at the front of the property. But just didn't submit a landscaping plan with the filing. Another one was the estimated project schedule.
Well, are we fine with them, what was planned, or do we want a landscaping plan? It's kind of. I wanted to go over these before, you know, confirm.
That's the applicant. I mean, it's mostly a wooded lot.
Yeah.
A wooded perimeter. There's no direct abutters to it that need screening.
Yeah. And we defer this non-engineer related question. Plans require several trees to be planted near the entrance, so.
Yeah.
You know, as a board, are we fine with how the plan is laid out? Do we want to require a landscaping plan?
No. I don't think so.
Okay. Seems like a consensus of that one's fine. Project schedule. Applicant requests a waiver of the requirement for an estimated project schedule. Applicant indicates that the work will take less than one year to complete. Requires all written estimate of the cost plan improvements. See comment 1 and 2 below. There's one B. Written statement indicating the time requirement and cost of improvements. Application. Applicant has requested a waiver of the time requirement statement. However, an estimate of costs cannot be, of costs of improvements cannot be found, not found. Mr. Allen, estimated project schedule and.
Question was about the cost of the construction?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe those are more for public road projects. This is more for private access. There's really no structures. There's no, no utilities. It's basically just a gravel pad, and our client is going to be doing the earthwork. So it's really not like a job that's going to be sent out for a public, public bid. So it's, it's basically just clearing trees and clearing a pad. We didn't think a formal written estimate needed to be done.
I didn't call it that. I mean, just, it's, it's clear as wood all day. He's clearing his own path to process wood, so.
And nothing's going to be getting put up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And typically, a cost analysis is done for a future bond, like a subdivision roadway, so you can track costs throughout the project in case, you know, a developer, you know, backs out or whatnot. You can pick up the, the, the schedules.
Okay. All right. Sounds like the board's good with that.
All right, next one, the certificate with American, with the American Disabilities Act. I don't think there's.
There's no structure.
Right.
Yeah.
Saying it's not applicable, handicap accessibility requirements.
Engineer requests a waiver. It's not applicable. Is there anything, any laws or anything that makes that force? Or is that kind of a discretionary based on the plan?
Mr. Chairman, if you may?
Yes.
My thoughts on this is it's, when you read this, it's hard to determine if it is or is not required. I would guess if they filed for variance with MAAB, they probably get a variance. The truth is, the planning board, this isn't your job to determine whether it is or isn't handicapped accessible or accessibility requirements apply. I would suggest the board just say, comply to the extent of the law. Leave it to the applicant to figure it out. The planning board really doesn't want to be releasing somebody from a responsibility that MAAB says they have. And alternatively, you don't want to force somebody to be complying with a law that really doesn't apply.
Okay.
But it's not your job. You could just say, comply to the extent of the law.
So maybe we not grant that waiver, but have that as an order of condition?
Right.
Just comply with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's required.
Does that seem clear, Mr. Allen? He took the wrong turn. Cheese.
He's on mute.
You muted after that, too. Mark, can you hear us? I need you to unmute. Can't. Probably picking up his kid or whatever.
I, I.
Yep, got you back. Sorry about that.
All right. Did you hear that discussion about the number four, the compliance with ADA?
Yes, yep. Absolutely fine with that discussion.
Okay. Anything else to hammer out, Matt?
It's a site right through onto the Kanan Street.
Nope. It's just your friends again. It's really doing its thing. So just to review in the open forum, the special permit review criteria.
Sure.
Discussing. Criteria being traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. Any concerns there?
Board?
Nope.
Social, economic, and community needs, which are served by the proposal.
Any concerns, board?
Yeah.
Adequacy of utilities and other public services.
Not applicable.
Neighborhood character and social structures. This is a zone, industrial zone. I think there's another. There's a little wood processing, I don't know if he's made. But you got a warehouse right across the street, other industrial uses.
The wood processing is, I think that's an exit behind the Shell Station, but unless there's another one, yeah. Oh, yeah, that one's been there for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah.
Neighborhood character issues that we know?
No.
Impacts on the natural environment?
Nope. They're minimizing it.
Yeah.
We've got it sort of conditions already for the con con.
Which that takes care of it.
Yeah. Potential fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment.
Don't see any concerns with that. Board, any issues?
Good.
Right. Special permit review criteria. Site plan criteria. Maximize pedestrian vehicular safety, both on-site and in-pressing from it.
I think the plan has.
Site distance there. Minimize the volume of cut and fill, number of removed trees, six-inch caliber larger, length of removed stone walls, area of wetlands, vegetated displaced, the extent of stormwater flow increased from the site, solar erosion, and threat of air and water pollution. That's a law and one thing.
All set there.
Yeah. Minimize construction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. That's not applicable.
And I, I think it's minimized anyways.
Yeah. Minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, and other outdoor services viewed from the public. The process, president actually used your zone. Okay, there. There's definitely a buffer off the back.
Oh, yeah.
Minimize glare from headlights and lighting intrusion and light overspill into the night sky. This is not lighting proposed in the plan. Probably adequate access to each structure for fire and emergency service equipment.
But so it's going to be a gate. Is it going to be a knock box or anything?
That's a good question.
There's no structure.
But the wood pile could go up, or the machine could go up, so.
The machine could.
Mr. Allen, access for fire department or police if there's an emergency?
It's on mute again.
Am I, am I back?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, just to.
He is going to have a gate, but he's not going to have a knock box there. Maybe he can coordinate with the fire department?
For what, a knocks box or a key or?
Yeah, maybe having a key.
Yeah.
Is that what a knocks box is for, storage of a key?
Yeah.
Whatever they, whatever they request. How about that?
Yeah, there can be a condition.
Fire department, or whatever's fine with the keys, they're fine. If they request a knock box, then have them put in a box.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever will work fine with, with the police and fire, I think will be best.
Just in case they have to get back there.
Yeah.
All right, so the condition of that for.
Mission ADA. All right, um, I put stormwater management as reviewed by our review consultant. Minimized original character from character materials, scale of buildings in vicinity. Minimize view of public ways and places to plant in five trees up front.
Yeah.
Minimize contaminated groundwater from on-site wastewater disposal systems. Operations on the premises involving use, storage, handling, containment hazardous substances. I don't think there's any risk there.
No.
Check compliance with provisions of zoning bylaw and other laws, putting parking and loading, sign and landscaping. Those are review requirements for site plan.
Sounds like we got it covered?
I think so.
One thing was, there was discussion about restroom facilities. The owner said they would be willing to put a, put a party.
Yeah, I think it was on the plan, too.
Add a spot for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is great.
Any public comment?
Yeah, I asked once, but. Uh, lost again. Any other, any comments or questions from the public regarding this project? Online or in person? Seeing as none? Yeah. Board, any, anything else before we close?
Good to go.
Okay. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing for Off Davis Street, SNL Realty Trust, application for plan, site plan review and special permit. So all the hearing is now closed. All right. Mr. Benoit?
So we have two applications. We have a special permit and a site plan. Let's do the special permit first. The voting members are the elected members.
Okay.
So special permit, SNL Realty Trust, looking for motion to approve this special permit with standard special conditions, with the additional conditions for the, to negotiate with the fire department for access to the gate. And the condition for ADA is referenced in the Quinn Engineering letter dated October 22nd.
Okay. That's motion.
Yeah.
To be made.
Motion, what do you want? Motion to accept? Special permit.
So moved.
Yeah, either so moved, want to do that?
Yeah.
Go ahead, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Wickers, I'm Mr. Gannatic. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Seeing as none? And the special.
Yeah, TSPI, was it 240904?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any amendments?
Oh, um, even with our other one, the standard hours of operations that we've been applying to our other. I don't have our standard conditions in front of me, but they were, was it eight to five Mondays through Fridays? Saturdays?
The Saturdays got changed a little bit.
Saturdays was eight to one?
For drilling, blasting.
Yeah, that's for, it's a little.
We were requesting no drilling and blasting on Saturdays. And nothing before eight.
Right.
And nothing after.
Three.
Three. You know, I know you're not drilling and blasting up there, but that format, we need to get hammered out. As long as he's okay with that, where he's not drilling and blasting, so.
We'll put the draft through the applicant, so they can review it.
Yeah, so that would be as reviewed on our hours of operation.
And we can confirm those at our, at our next meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
Looking for a motion to approve the site plan review, application with standard special conditions. Can also apply those same two conditions, condition for access to the fire department for the gate and condition for ADA is referenced in the Quinn Engineering letter out of October 22nd.
Okay.
And that'll be so moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Wickers, I'm Mr. Schlesman. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlesman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Don't get lost.
Thank you.
All right. Andy, Andy, is he?
He's on here for the mailbox specs.
Okay. All right. We can get Andy off. We'll talk about mail light specs. Mr. Leonard, how are you?
There you go.
Good, how are you?
Good. You found, you found the light?
Yes.
Okay.
So I didn't add these into the draft, but it's provided the light specs for us to consider adding to the draft. I think this is the one that, Andy, has this already been installed that Joseph wrote? And this is the spec that was chosen by the.
Yes, it has.
Okay. See if we have any issues.
And that's for the mailbox?
Yeah.
Is that the one we're going to stay with from now on?
That's what we want to do.
Discussion was brought up at last meeting on trying to keep everything uniform moving forward. The highway department's okay with it?
Yep.
That's what we're going to run with?
Yep.
Has a.
So we have 30 different lights in the town?
Yeah.
Has a seven-year battery life. And.
It also has, it's, I was over there the last planning board meeting after, but the light stays on, not at full brightness, but it has a motion detector that once that's triggered, it brightens right up, and you can set it at two lumen settings. We have it at the lowest, and it's more than adequate.
Okay.
Nice. Thank you.
Yeah, I like that, that it's not just bright all the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine with putting that in the decision and maybe keeping a copy of this for.
Future.
Future.
Absolutely.
Highway department's all happy with it?
Mm-hmm.
Brett?
Be a tough one to hold on to in this story, to try to remember, like, in 10, in five years, someone's going to come to us, hey, we need a light, which one do we use? Uh, hopefully we still have that paper. General keeper.
We'll know where to go drive.
Yeah.
It's over here. This is the one.
Go to Joseph Road.
Go to the highway department. They should have a record of it, I hope.
All right, that's fine. Do we need a vote, Matt?
No.
Okay.
Awesome. Appreciate it, Andrew.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
No. Yeah, he likes, he likes checking in, saying how it was.
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
Do you want to ask Mr. McCollum?
Yeah. Mr. McCollum, are you interested in hearing or discussing something on our agenda? See you online. She could just be listening.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, hearing schedule, folks. We're booking into 2025.
So this does include two dates in July and August?
June, July, and August.
Yeah, sorry. No, we usually do two in June.
Uh, no, we, that was three months we took off. On school.
Depends, depends on how close it is to the.
Yeah.
Like, that, I don't know, one of these, like, June 26th, that's fourth of July week.
Yeah.
I think, I looked at the last year's one. I think it's three more meetings.
Yeah.
Than last, this year.
Mm-hmm. Why don't we discuss days first?
Yeah, these are on second and fourth Wednesdays.
Um, or second and fourth Thursdays.
Oh, boy. Really don't like Thursdays.
No, I thought you liked Thursdays. No.
I'm here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday already. Keep that way, like a... The chair was yours suggesting to do Thursdays?
I like Thursdays, it made the week go by so much faster. You get out of a Thursday meeting, you go home, you go to bed, you have one more work day and it's...
We used to have it on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
That way, they had, the reason we did it was, they're already here for the long day.
Yeah.
And then they just rolled over to the meeting and then that was it. So, they didn't have to have the extra day here, just because of us. And on a Tuesday, what's going on normally on a Tuesday? Not a whole lot, you know?
Yeah, that's a tough, that's a tough day for...
It, it is now, remember, we didn't have to Zoom, unless they have to Zoom in the other room.
And we used to meet in that room too.
We did.
I remember, I think there was something, there was times selectmen were here, we were in their meeting.
Always, yeah. But, I mean, it's a deal where...
Goes back to Tuesday.
As far as like for Matt, like you said, you're here Monday, you're here a lot. And to eliminate one more day him having to be here, that's why back in the day it was always on Tuesday.
Most times we can get by in that room, but that's not set up for Zoom, is it?
No, it's not.
That's, that's a bigger struggle.
Right.
Right, that's the struggle. Is there ever an intent to it?
Under our planning budget?
Yeah.
Cable has enough money.
Bring your laptop. Yeah, that, that was good, the Tuesdays, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's, starting to think about that, would you want to look into that on a Tuesday? To alleviate a lot of the hassle?
So, the issue is the select board meets Tuesdays?
Yeah.
And then come also meets on the alternating Tuesdays.
Okay.
So, we run into them during town meeting season especially.
Yeah, but that is, so how did we, for all them years, manage to survive doing it on Tuesdays?
Because there wasn't the Zoom thing. The Zoom is what's going to...
Well, no, I'm saying, the select one always met when we were meeting.
Yeah, but we were in that room, they were in here.
They were in there, yeah.
So, now we kind of rely on the Zoom.
Right. But that's what I was bringing up. Would you want to look into that or do you just want to keep Wednesday?
What would that entail, Matt, to set, set up Zoom in that room? It really should have it. I think that's real tricky with Tuesdays for us setting the agendas. We have to set them by Friday or sometimes even Thursday if when, when the summers are not here. And especially if there's a holiday, we've got to set the agenda of Wednesdays during the summer. Like, it gets, gets a little odd when you're booking in the weekends with setting the agenda. Like, right now with Wednesdays, Jake and I set the agenda on Monday. It's, it's, it's pretty easy.
Okay.
And then Thursday, if that was, got it on Thursday, but...
I'm fine with Wednesday.
Wednesday is a real convenient right now.
I'm fine with Wednesday.
Yeah.
But I'm also fine with bringing back Tuesday, we can get Zoom in that room.
I mean, we still have some time to figure this out.
If I should comment, there's also only one Zoom account for the cable department, so I don't know how they would handle the account.
Oh.
So, if it's being used in this room, the account can't be used at another meeting in another room.
No.
Alright. That eliminates that.
A little complication.
Thank you, that eliminates that thought.
So, fight for the Zoom access.
So, select...
Which one are we?
But, they do like YouTube Live, they don't really do much Zoom.
They meet on second and fourth Tuesdays, but they also sporadically hold meetings on the first and third as needed. And they might need that space as needed, right? So, we kind of don't want to get in the way of that.
Yeah, and they don't, they just, they don't use Zoom a lot, but we still don't have Zoom in that room, so...
What would it cost to get a second account? I, I don't know. I think it's nominal, right? I, I don't know, that's...
Well...
Do you know, no?
Why don't we maybe think Wednesdays and maybe do some research about setting up that other room?
Yes.
Yeah.
To go back to Tuesdays and make that work.
I mean, do we even have a lot of, we don't have a lot of space in there, we have seven members.
We always had seven members.
We didn't have two alternates at all times, I mean...
Yeah, we did, for a while we did.
We have nine people at that table.
Matt, Matt, we're fighting to get Tuesdays for you and you're fighting us back. He wanted the Tuesdays, we do too. Yeah, it, it's tight, but...
Operationally difficult.
It was it, we just, we set the room up, we just enjoyed it. The alternates, we had the chairs along the side too. Uh, we never had any, sure.
Why don't we think about Wednesdays and look into Tuesdays and see if they're viable?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's look at the Wednesday meetings.
You know, we're going to drop in at least July, August, maybe June, July, August.
Definitely July and August.
Is that just jabbering or are we actually deciding?
No, we're not deciding.
Twenty-third, because I'm...
It's Wednesdays right now.
I know. There's two versions of the schedule here.
July 23rd.
Wednesday, but meeting?
Get rid of the Tuesday one, Mike, get rid of the Tuesday one, we're just looking at the Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Get rid of the third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just get rid of the twenty-third and the twenty-seventh.
Okay, so we're probably not going to consider the Thursday ones.
To meet on the ninth and thirteenth.
The ninth is...
Do you have to be here, Matt?
Wednesday.
Surely, someone does.
What is?
I just think there'd be more people out there.
So, in the past, alright, we got rid of June, one of them, and kept it as an option. If it was a light agenda, we stayed with our schedule.
Yeah.
If something really serious came up, then we'd do the second June, but we always had June, July and August.
So, you want to put a star on June 25th and do an as needed or?
Let me look at this.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if you're, if Matt, you're looking to get rid of July 23rd for your schedule?
Yes.
So, with that, we should get rid of June 25th because it's already kind of close to the fourth of July. You have two meetings kind of opposite weeks of the July 4th, so I'd get rid of the 25th of June.
Yeah, that's it, so June 25th, July 23rd.
Which is the second meeting in both months, so might as well get rid of August 27th.
Those are being deleted, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, and August 27th?
Mm-hmm.
Now, we have had some resolve, I think, uh, Tri-Town, we came in, I think on one of them months?
Yeah.
For a meeting, so we're always flexible for the meeting.
Yeah, it's available if we need it.
If we need it, we'll do it, but if we don't, like, if there's something not pressing, then we just don't have the meeting.
You can just contact us and see.
So, is that, everyone kind of like that plan?
Yeah.
So, Wednesdays, the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, eliminate June 25th, July 23rd and August 27th. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2025 as discussed.
Do you want to, me to look into the Tuesday first?
Do some research, see if we can...
The, I don't want to accept the schedule yet.
Well, I don't know if we're going to be able to get Zoom up by then.
Yeah, well, we'll see what happens, I mean, at the very least, we can look into it, we still have some time for us.
Okay.
Do you, but I'm going to ask you, I mean, Tuesdays just don't work or?
No, it's just, it's conflicting with the selectmen and the finance committee, especially during town meeting time. And with posting agendas, when you have Mondays off and Fridays off, we had to post the agendas on like Wednesday of that week for a meeting coming up on Tuesday. That gives us a big advance.
Stay on Wednesday.
It's kind of annoying for public hearings and material deadlines and getting packets ready and stuff, so...
It's fine. There's nothing wrong with the Wednesdays.
Yeah.
There's pros and cons to Tuesdays, so let's keep it Wednesdays.
We used to do them on Tuesdays.
Yeah, but now it's different, yeah.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mrs. Zbicka, Senator Schlesman, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Get that to Jen.
Those are going away?
Yeah.
Okay, 25, 23.
Okay.
27.
Subdivision regulations discussion.
Thank you.
Do we have anything in the...
So, these books take home with you.
Okay.
That's Jen's note says on the top. Kind of redlined a bunch of the additions that we talked about. We still need to hold a public hearing if we're going to change anything, but the first change is on page five. It's a regularity factor. The equation works and makes it so that the lots aren't like oddly shaped like snakes, with the long tails and the heads in the back and they're not oddly shaped like going around other lots and stuff. It makes them much more uniform, I mean, I could do a couple examples for you if you want.
Um, we have a lot of towns implemented that?
From what I understand, both Auburn and Nating have this.
Yeah.
Those are the two towns I worked for. And it definitely keeps from those odd substantially irregular lots that we have throughout town where people are just trying to get the lot size by creating this long pencil just to get to the, the frontage.
So, this would only affect new?
Yes, yep.
If it's pre-existing and it's archaped, it is what it is?
Yeah, right, this is just for new development.
For new, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be for A and R and also subdivisions?
Yeah, right, that's exactly what it's for, A and R subdivision.
Like you were saying, if it's something written down in the subdivision book, then on an A and R, then it would apply to an A and R.
Okay, and next red?
Next red one is page fourteen. Fourteen, thank you. I'm not sure where exactly to put this, but this is under the plan requirements for definitive plan. It's probably another place that I could change this and update it a little bit, because it talks about easements throughout the document. But this is where detention intention, retention ponds must be shown on their own parcel of land, as opposed to being shown as an easement on someone's existing property. Eliminates a lot of those access issues that you have with private property owners that don't even know that they have a detention pond on the property in most cases. That parcel gets turned over to the town with the road, once that's ready.
So, this is for the retention pond for a subdivision?
Yes.
Is there going to be verbiage in there, there won't be any easements and the property will be turned over to the town?
Yeah, I mean, there's easements in here for other things like utilities and whatnot, and those are referenced throughout the document, but they don't talk about detention retention pond easements per se. So, this will be its own parcel, doesn't need an easement anymore.
So, the retention pond, I mean, you're going to put verbiage in there to be transferred to the property of the town of Douglas?
Yeah.
You're going to put that language in there?
I could, yeah.
That way there it's known?
Yeah.
Where this isn't going to be an easement, this is going to be a parcel of land to be turned over to the town of Douglas. Where the retention pond, because of cleaning, access and all that kind of stuff, that's where that all came up.
Yep.
Uh, the next page, cut fill volume and else.
Should be turned over to the town of Douglas upon acceptance of in public way.
Are you doing fill too? We never had fill before.
Yeah, that's a good point, I just...
You shouldn't have fill.
Put it as cut fill just because, if we just do earth removal volume analysis?
I think it should be earth removal.
Yeah, volume analysis of earth removal.
Yeah, not a fill.
Okay. The, the only reason fill came up is because I think there was a site in Oxbridge where someone brought in a ton of fill and it turned out to be hazardous and it was a massive cleanup. I can't remember the property, but the town administrator was talking about it. We just don't want to see that happen in Douglas, so I kind of put that in.
We've allowed that.
Yeah.
We've allowed, and on Office 16?
Yeah.
They pulled a special permit and everything else. You know what they were bringing in, they was bringing in a liquid fill.
Right.
Which is, they, they had to hold the fill.
Yeah, I mean, I think even just seeing those numbers on a plan is helpful and that's all this is asking for, what the fill and the removal volume is. So, we know how much they're bringing in, it's not going to regulate it or anything, there's no proof denial for the amount of volume for a subdivision plan.
The main thing is removal.
Yeah, I understand, but seeing both the numbers, it's also helpful, because they have to come up with a net for the number.
Let me throw this out there, we haven't had any issues on keeping just earth removal.
Yeah.
We haven't had no issues on fill.
Right. That's a special permit, right, to the zoning by law. And when they're done under a subdivision, you can regulate them without the special permit unless the separate lots that are released under the subdivision need their own earth removal. So, I mean, usually they're going to show us both, when they're cutting the road, they're going to show us what that cut is, they're going to show us what the removal is and what, what's brought in for fill. We're just asking for volume, that's all we're asking for, just what those numbers are. We're not looking for a proof denial situation here.
Because normally we require no material to be removed from the site on a lot of these projects, process on site.
Right, and if it's being contained on site, then yeah.
There is no numbers.
Right, right. So, if it's to be brought in or to be removed, we should at least know what the numbers are, that's all this is saying.
So, we want to know if they're going to bring in a million cubic yards of fill?
Right. Right.
Makes sense.
A little further down, I don't know if that datum is accurate or if that's the most recent one that they use for elevations. I just put ore current in there, town council's going to review this, so I just want to make a look at that. Next one. They didn't touch anything in the residential compound. Get into that. Page 25. This is under road width, 5.1.2. I just put the minimum width, paved roadway shall be 24 feet.
Where are you putting that, on E?
It's, uh, 5.1.2B, the top of page 25.
Alright, well, go back to page 23.
Yeah. This is under...
Minimum width of 16 feet for its entirety length.
These are for the, the...
Okay.
These are for the, um...
Common?
Residential compounds, right.
Common private ways.
Those ones have their own widths.
Common private ways, you only...
Right, for the residential compounds that are under the homeowners association.
16 feet? Width?
I don't know how we feel about that.
I don't. Truck with an 8.6, not merits.
It depends on the plan, like, I have a, I'm on a compound, it's two houses and 16 feet is all we need, it's two houses with same family. 16 feet does us more than enough, you know? We get deliveries, I, I, dang it, I don't want any water, trust me.
Alright.
It, but if it's like a residential compound...
Well, then, we should, staying there, how many houses, where, where do you start and stop on that? I understand two, but if you have four, five?
Then, I, I think as a board, we, we kind of look at and, and see what's right, but...
You heard him say tonight, you should have numbers.
Yeah.
Black and white, don't guess.
Well, we have, we have it at a minimum of 16, so I think that works.
If you had five, five houses?
Well, they were minimum of 18, nine and nine.
Right, I mean... And it, it's tough because the common, the, the family compound is kind of geared towards basically what I did for my plan and I, I, I would hate to see that get restricted more to like prevent families from doing what I did. But where, if you have someone that makes, takes that compound and does more of like a subdivision with, they're going to sell all the lots, that's a whole different story.
Okay.
But if you have like a, a regular family that's looking to build a house behind and make a car driveway, that's, I think 16 is perfect for that, but...
Okay.
But if you're looking at more of like a development where private lots are going to be sold off, I think that's where you would maybe look to, maybe make it wider.
Should we look at the number of houses that were?
Yeah.
Maybe you have, maybe we have to be more specific in that area.
In that area.
Minimum sixteen feet. Depending on, like you just said, number.
Number of homes.
But we have that discretion.
Yeah.
To make it, to force it wider.
I have a question, Jeremy. So is there a difference between family compound and common driveway?
Yes.
Because common driveway was something that came out years ago and there was no width criteria.
Common driveways are law by right when there's two houses and three or more is a special permit.
It all depends on frontage and everything like that, too.
Right. And each of those lots needs their own frontage.
But we can, during site plan review, can determine whether or not the width needs to be increased based on the number of houses that are being proposed.
Yeah, the special permit, yeah, absolutely.
I think we can do it there.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Going to go twenty-four feet for the minimum width?
Yeah, is that a good number? Minimum width, anyway?
There again, you have a development that has fingers and you have a main road. Do you want the main road only twenty-four?
What do you think?
I would ask, I would start by asking the highway super and if he has a recommendation for it.
Because we just, and you know where I'm going. I'm just going back, start getting the snow, this and that and everything else. Let's say you have a development with twenty houses and you have a couple cul-de-sacs off that main road. Not a problem. All of a sudden you're getting your oil trucks, your UPS trucks, your FedEx trucks, your Amazon trucks, all that coming in, snow banks, the whole nine yards. Twenty-four feet becomes twenty, maybe, on a good day?
I'd look at like Downs Road. That development was really well-built. I think the main road, it's been a good main road between south and southeast. And, you know, I travel that and.
Yeah.
That road maintains that neighborhood very well. I think there is smaller cul-de-sacs off of it, too.
Yeah.
It'd be a good project to look at to see what, how wide that is.
See how wide it is, yeah. Yeah.
Because, you know, there's a subdivision, but basically it turned in, it's a public road now, but a lot of people use that to get between south and southeast and.
Does it?
Yeah. So that'd be a good one to see. I was actually, I almost brought my wheel over there to see how wide that is. I might do that.
Yeah. It's good.
Michael, does it take account, park cars? I mean, there's no formula for that, but most good roads are at least three vehicles wide, right? In case you have a car parked on one side or the other, people could pass or repass. Would that, would that number twenty-four accommodate that? Because I don't know if you have a median width for a vehicle because you're talking about wider trucks. It's mostly going to be cars. What do you use?
Well, you figure, your average garage door, say ten feet wide with your marriage. And normally if you're coming in and out with a pickup truck, you're, you have inches on each side going in a ten-foot garage door.
A lot of these developments do the keep berms where you can drive up and, you know, you're hosting a party, your guests can drive up and kind of park off the road in your lawn or there's a sidewalk on one side and you can kind of hop up in the grass there. Well, that's sort of like what those keep berms.
All the more reason to have sidewalks on both sides. I don't know if you've been waving them lately, but they used to wave them like crazy years ago.
We've been doing them, one, I think the bylaws say two, but we've always waved, just have one.
One. Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people in the subdivisions would like to have sidewalks on both sides of poured concrete.
Yes.
That's something in here that.
I actually do like the sidewalks on both sides.
Thank you.
I was on, I was on vacation in Florida and, you know, woke up in the morning and just do a nice walk loop. I can able to walk around, use the crosswalks and walk all around without having to jump across the street and.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I kind of, it also depends. Like industrial park, maybe not, but I'm fine without with it just not being an automatic green light. Yeah, we'll wave it.
I'm with you. So how about the width then?
I mean, I look input from the hardware department, too. I mean, he knows what it's like, especially in what they're, your average plow is what, eight-six or so?
I just don't want to make it too wide where they have to, where they're forced to make two passes in each direction when we have limited resources. That's why I would like.
But also, traveling with a plow and you meet another plow, when you're ready to kiss plows because the roads are so narrow.
Yeah.
Or you kiss the tree on the outside isn't fun either. So it's one of those deals where it's a combination of both and looking at all of it. I mean, this isn't going into effect tomorrow.
Yeah.
But it's always been a topic and you heard him speak tonight on, you don't have any roadless. You're opening up a situation of issues. So I think we need to get it really hammered out, whether it's a secondary or is it a main. If it's a main trunk line in a subdivision with secondary roads going off of it, your main trunk, you might want this number, but your smaller ones, like you're saying, off to the side, maybe only twenty.
Yeah.
But the main one where everybody's turning in, turning out, the whole deal, you might want thirty to allow for all the extra and room for trucks and things to swing. And then I know the street I'm on trying to make a swing, your friend ties her in the culvert. You, you can't make a swing, which is wrong. When you make it a development, make it right. Make it right the first time. And literally, you are in the culvert to make a swing. And you should see them going in the solar farm, what they have to do. Even though that's wide, they're in the properties across the street just trying to make that swing. Roads are too small. They're too narrow. They're made for a horse and a buggy.
So through the chair, what would you recommend then, Michael? What would you like to say?
I'd like to say twenty-six, but.
So that's only two more feet.
Two feet makes a big difference.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's twenty-six.
At least on the, like the main artery. Because that Sutton Douglas development, they, they made a good point of, you know, the main artery may be a little wider, the secondary road's a little bit smaller.
Smaller, yeah.
So we can play with that.
Yeah.
Get some input from Adam and.
Yeah.
But I know that there is a push for making, I think the state and everyone wants to make them smaller for stormwater.
Yeah, that's the other thing. We're going to end the task without dating our storm.
Well, the thing is this, and I understand, stormwater, you're going to start having people get hit on bikes, people that walk and this and that. What's the priority? I mean, that's what we're going to figure out. And with the narrow roads nowadays, like even coming in tonight, one's on a bicycle on one side, one's walking on the other side. There goes half your road, right?
What they did in Hubbardston, they put a standard sidewalk on one side and they put ADA sidewalk on the other side and they have a bike line, big bike lane on their main street, which is about a mile long. And, I mean, that's, to me, that's serious overkill. Especially.
I don't think we have like regional bike routes through Douglas.
Yeah.
Transportation map.
No. It does, I think it's just in the center of town where they have the bike lane.
Then we couldn't put one in our center.
Well, we don't.
Yeah, it would fit.
They would. The state would make us do it, though.
Yeah. If we had a tip project, they'd make us do it.
So.
Yeah, get some further discussion on it. See how we go.
Really? So on to the next one, page twenty-six. So this is kind of where I wasn't sure what to do, where I put the board may require the drainage basin be set to its own parcel. And then cross out the next sentence, where the board may require that there be provided to town a stormwater easement or drainage right away, thematic with the conform substantial lines of such drainage way. Cross that sentence out. So it just reads, the board may require basin to be set to its own parcel to provide for construction of any necessary purposes, but extensions of strange ways adjoining property. But this is under the title of easements, so I need to have it moved somewhere else. So I got to work on that.
Okay.
This one, I wasn't sure what to do there, so I kind of wanted council's opinion. Also talks about easements and rights to drain. We got to, we got to get all that correct. Five point three, you guys asked me to kind of strike this sentence, board may by appropriate endorsement plan require that no building be erected on, upon such park or parks without approval for a period of three years. Then there was something on there, the board shall not require dedication of such recreation areas without just compensation to the owner. So the compensation we have to give them for them to put a park in. Really? That's kind of weird. If we want them to put a park in, they should just put the damn park without getting some sort of just compensation. What am I going to do, pay them? Give them another lot? Like, how does that work?
Maybe we're supposed to approve their waivers.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just, I just didn't like that. That just kind of reads poorly. So cross that sentence out.
On that area, should we discuss width, parking and access points to such area?
Yeah, there's something I should put in there, too.
Because we discussed that even tonight, where if you're going to have it, why not have it with access? Without access, it's useless.
Suitable access. Kind of right for approval, if in a plan, board may require the plan to show park or parks suitably located for playground or recreation.
And have access to such area. Suitable access.
We want to make sure that's covered in the open space requirement, too. That's under the flex development special permit, so we get it. That's a totally different thing.
Yeah. And that's not like having one parking spot, if you know what I mean.
So located for playground or recreation and provide suitable access for parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, this is on page twenty-nine. Item five, we talked about underground distribution systems provided for any and all utilities, including electrical telephone services. And it said adequate street lighting shall be provided, but it didn't say underground. So I added the word underground street.
Through the chair, on page thirty-two.
I'm getting there.
Well, it's related to this one.
Okay.
Electric telephone cable.
Okay.
Which probably strike or above ground from that, then?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Good call. All right. All right, let's go back to page thirty, right on the top. This one's for Ernie.
Got it.
Planted on five-foot grass strips.
Yeah.
But not between the sidewalk and the paved surface.
Yeah.
But it says in the five-foot grass strips and those are what's between this sidewalk and the paved surface. So I got to move them, shall be planted, shall not be planted in the five-foot grass strips and not between the sidewalk and the paved surface.
Yeah.
Right? So they're kind of local. I mean, that's saying where they shouldn't be. Maybe we should just put where they should be.
Correct. And have them at least a couple feet away from the sidewalk.
Right.
On the other side, so when they grow their root structure, doesn't push the sidewalk.
I mean, the right of way is going to have to be a little larger than just the sidewalk.
Yeah, that'd be tough. People own right to the sidewalk.
Yeah. Trees on private property and that.
Yeah. That's a tough one. Because if I own a house lot and I want to put a tree in my front yard, I'm going to put it there, but.
Eliminate it completely?
I don't know. You know, I, I go up to some developments and I see nice trees on the side. They do look nice and I know Ernie doesn't like them.
I don't like them, but, and I understand why between the sidewalk and the street.
Yeah.
Take a drive through the city, off the main street.
Yeah, and it makes it difficult to mow it, too.
Well, not that. The sidewalk's heaved like this and the curbing of the street's getting pushed out like that because the tree grows.
Yeah.
And that's what you don't want to do is, you, one comment, we're talking about roads and maintenance, the next, we're making more work for the town because we're blowing all the sidewalks and roads apart with trees.
That's why they need to be concrete sidewalks, too.
So a five-foot grass strip is pretty big, like to this table.
It is a wide grass strip. I don't know if it needs to be that wide, too. If we're not going to put a tree in it, we should reduce it to maybe two foot or, you know, something, reduce it down a little bit.
Is there any law on, on where or how far? No?
I don't know. It has to be, the tree should just be in the right of way, but usually the right of way is right at the edge of the sidewalk.
Our right of ways are fifty, sixty feet wide.
Yeah.
The roads, we're, we're arguing at twenty-six feet. You still got another twenty-five feet of right of way.
That's true.
So there is no such.
Sidewalks on both sides with the grass strips gives you twenty-two extra feet.
So if you want twenty-six, twenty-eight. So if you put two feet between the roadway.
Sidewalk's forty.
Twenty-six foot wide road, you have four feet on each side for grass strips, you have thirty. You still got another twenty feet to go. Can on each side for your sidewalk and your trees.
Yeah.
But if you're running utilities underground, are you going to run them down the street or under the sidewalk?
Right. Five-foot grass strip.
Right. That's why you had the grass strip.
Is that where the, what are they, the transformer boxes?
I wonder if you can just put it.
They go there, too?
Uh, these trees shall be, shall not be planted, or shall be planted within the right of way, but not within the grass strip.
So that means they'll be on the inside of the sidewalk?
People's lawn, but on.
In the yard.
On the, within the easement. And we just get rid of the whole thing of just wavering, waving that tree thing every time. Just plant the trees within the easement, but just not within the grass. Keep it, keep it a grass.
What's the minimum set back from the road?
We would, once we take, I think the town would have to mow the grass strip if we accept it, but a lot of times the homeowner just does it.
I know it's not removal. Homeowners is thoughtful for.
The sidewalk, they are. Not all people.
That is, so if you have a sidewalk, you're supposed to keep it clear.
The, the only thing with the tree placement, there's two things with it. One is, as they mature, the roots, if they're too close to the sidewalk, the roots are going to push the sidewalk up.
Mm-hmm.
Depending on what type of trees they are, but maples, definitely, oats, I don't know. The other thing is the, the branch spread. They're going to get pretty, depending on where the houses are, they're going to get pretty close. So, because you can't put the tree right next to the sidewalk. It's going to have to be a few feet away.
Yeah.
So we have to make sure that we're not burdening things, you know, twenty-five, thirty years out.
And I concur. Our biggest problem in town is dead limbs of trees falling into the street. Anywhere I talk about platinum next to the road. I think it may make a requirement for every house built, you must plant two trees on that property. Now we're there, they want to put one, like you say, on the middle of your front yard or two off to the side. It's on their property, the landowner has to take care of it, the whole nine yards. When they buy the house, they've got the two trees on it.
Because I've gone through developments, too, where it just seems like you're driving to a cornfield. Like, because there's nothing, there's no char, nature, character at all.
Right, well, that's why you, you passed a requirement where for every house built on that lot, there shall be one or two trees planted in the front yard.
I got to look into that. I don't think we can do that because the subdivision is the creation of the road, it's not to regulate the lots. Because once they're released, they can do what they want with their lots, when they're released from the control of the subdivision.
Both of them are within the easement.
You mean like within the right of way?
Yeah.
Seems like they have to be on that outside of the sidewalk.
So within the right of way that it's governed in the subdivision, that it's not on their private property.
Yes, but it might be kind of, if we're not putting them in the grass strip, we're not putting them in.
Can that be looked into?
Yeah, absolutely.
Where, or how could I say it? Yeah, see what the reg is, if we're allowing somebody to come in and cut the timber, clear it all out, the whole deal, we'll let you do that, but in return, each house, you're going to plant two trees, type deal.
Can't that be part of our negotiation?
Right, like you said, you can negotiate.
I don't think we can because the subdivision and the covenant for the roadway is the creation of the roadway and we bond the roadway with the creation of that, right? So when the lots are released, they're released from the planning board's control and they go into building park, building parks at that point. I don't think we can regulate the lots once they're released from the covenant. That's my, that's my hate. So I got to look into it.
Yeah, because we want beautiful subdivisions and roads. We just don't want the trees and the grass between the sidewalk and the road.
We don't want the egress hunder like you just said. Going the sidewalks are part, the road are part.
Research, Matt.
Boy, you've got a three-foot diameter tree.
Moving along, trying to prep this meeting up.
Can't see, get back out.
Yeah.
And are there any other changes on that?
No, we'll just keep working on the straps.
Yeah.
We want to schedule a public.
Make sure you bring this home and read it.
On page thirty-three. Prove style location postmaster for the post office box.
Okay.
And shall use, we discussed this, the light, the approved light structure and parking. I think it should be determined for so many houses, you'll have, say, ten and under, you might have one parking spot.
Where is this?
Uh, page thirty, number three. Middle of the page. Shall provide permanent central mailbox units.
Okay, and this is where we can add the specs for the light?
The light.
Okay.
And parking. We have to determine, let's say zero to ten, you have one pocket spot. Ten to twenty, you have two parking spots. 10 to 20, you have two parking spots. Offset from the road. And...
On-street parking, right?
Yeah, like on-street, right.
Yeah.
And we ran into an issue in one development where that box was put on somebody's front yard. It must be located in an area not to interfere with anybody's property. Almost like its own spot. Not somebody's front yard.
Zero to 10, one parking spot, 10-plus, two?
10 to, 10 to 20, like, I'd say two.
Get over that, 20 or more?
Discretion of the board, I'd say. Now, the way somebody's putting in 35 houses, you might say, hey, you put four spots there.
Back to the trees. 6.6 says that we're requiring them to put in trees.
Yep.
Every 100 feet.
Both sides of the roadway.
But they can't be in the grass strip.
Yeah, so we've got to, we gotta do some research, how we can get these trees planted.
I'll look at some other subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
So, but to Mike's comment, we could, could we change that to 50 feet on the trees? You know, that would do the same thing. But again, now we're adding all those trees, and the limbs falling, the burden on the homeowner, and whatever. So, I don't know. Maybe we try and work with the people developing these subdivisions to make it look good on their site plan review. Push back there.
All right, I just wanna move on from that. Matt's gonna do some research, and we have time. Yeah, just reach out for, from, to Adam for his comments on maybe those two treason with. Uh, master plan?
Yeah, so, how many survey results did we get, 460?
Yeah, they said they, except for one other community, they hadn't gotten that many so early. So we got a really good response.
That's good.
Yeah, on the survey.
Really good, yeah.
And it's probably at 500 by now. Just moved the box from outside my office toward the gym. We're probably gonna get a, like, a nice boost of folks putting their QR code in that are using the gym at our residence that haven't done it already. Um, we'll probably get some more survey results at our meeting next week, and we'll review those. But our workshop is scheduled for November...
14?
14. Starts at...
It's 5:30.
5:30 to 8. And board members are definitely encouraged to attend. I don't think we have to post for attendance or something like that. But, um, it's gonna be a great, great opportunity for feedback from the entire community. I think it's, I think it's a really good thing, CMRPC's putting a lot of work into it. Gonna be in the gym. Because of the survey results we got, we're probably anticipating more than 100 people. This room can only hold 100 people.
I just wanna make sure they're advertising as much as they can for the open house, because if I wasn't on the planning board, I wouldn't know that that open house was happening.
It's all over Facebook. I mean, but they're gonna change the ad from just the survey to advertise the open house.
Yeah, the flies, and everyone should've got the postcard and the mail. Not everyone has, but I guess most people have so far.
Yeah.
Mine was stuck in the back of my mailbox. I was looking for it.
But we're looking forward to the open house, it's gonna be interactive, we think it's gonna be a lot of fun, it's gonna cover all the areas that master plan covers. And you go from table to table, and I think, I think you'd find it, the way CMRPC staff puts it together, it's really interesting and a little bit fun, so...
Food and refreshments provided.
You bet. You bet.
Make sure of that.
All right, I'll be there, then.
Has everyone done the survey here? I might ask Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I did it 10 times.
Early's off.
That's why those numbers are boosted. No, that was a good survey, it was, it was well done.
It wasn't too hard, I mean, it didn't take too long.
All right. Ongoing development, Whiting Reservoir, see an update?
Yeah, they came to the select board for their public road hearing. The select board fully knows that they have, they still have some work to do, but one of the outstanding issues was Mr. Pace hadn't paid his taxes yet. We had paid those. There's still revision to the plan, because we did an A&R, because one of the houses was built slightly over the property line, so they moved the line, but it wasn't in their road layout plan when they brought it to us. We caught that after the fact, so they have to amend that. It's one of the items that they'll amend prior to town meeting. And they still got the work to do with the access road across the back. They gave the draft deed for Mr., um, oh, Jesus. Mr. Swenson and his wife, the draft deed for the transfer of land, that was part of the condition of approval. Also...
They claimed the retention bonds yet?
This, that's part of the work that they still need to do. They still have to put all the bounds on the road, which we're not done. It's all supposed, I think it was supposed to start this week or next. We should have a better update at our next meeting.
And...
Gonna keep an eye on it, to make sure it gets done.
I heard we're gonna be plowing and sanding the road, the selectmen kinda gave it that blessing?
Yeah, I think, yeah, right, the town administrator's gonna reach out to the highway department about doing that, because Mr. Pace is, no, I haven't talked to him.
If, I, I think if that's the case, we should look to retain some money from his bond, if possible, I don't know. But if he's, if we're stepping up to do this because neighbors are complaining because he wasn't doing it last year, it shouldn't, you know, we should try to get some money out of it, if the town's doing it.
I think that's something the selectmen asked, but I don't think it's something that they can, because it's not governed under the bond, it's not listed as one of the price items for, for maintenance of the road. I think we can pull it from there.
That's too bad.
How long does he have to do it before it gets pulled from town meeting?
I mean, it's on for a spring, so if, if it doesn't get done then, it'll be on for the next spring. If he doesn't get the work done by then, he might just buck away and would take the whole thing by tax title. We'll see. Not sure what he's gonna do.
Yeah, that's just unfortunate that neighbors are complaining that he wasn't maintaining, you know, sultan treating the road during the winter, and we have to step up to do it when we shouldn't be.
Right.
It was a mild winter last year.
A lot of private roads that have at least the top course down at this point, prior to subdivision being accepted, sometimes it never actually happens, the town takes over on it now. Because it's not like there's raised manholes that we're gonna run into at this point. So I think it's, it's safer than to do it, at least.
Yeah, but, you know, it's still more salt.
I agree.
And, you know, wear and tear on our trucks, and, you know, it's money out of our pocket, when it shouldn't be this year or last year.
Right.
All right, any other updates on going development?
Don't believe so.
Okay, not much more in the package. Uh, staff updates?
Oh, we did get a grant, we did get the master plan grant.
Yep.
We got the grant for 115,000 for CMRPC to administer the rest of the master plan grant. So, it was a community compact grant, we were awarded that last week, I think. We announced it at the master plan meeting, but let you guys know as well. We also have, this isn't on our agenda, but it's something the master plan committee has to talk about, is that we have two members that haven't been attending our meetings, so at some point...
It's on the agenda, master plan.
Yeah, so at some point, the master plan committee's gonna recommend to us to have those members removed. Um, I reached out to both of them. The, one of them didn't respond, and the other one didn't, didn't wanna be interested at all, so... There'll probably be an item on our next agenda to have them moved, because we're the appointing authority for the master plan.
I, I wish we didn't worry about Quorum, because I'd love to join it, but can't have more.
Right. Well, you could have, what do you, oh, yeah.
Well, it's, if I could, through the Chair, it's posted, I think we're safe.
Yeah.
And we don't, we don't speak, well, we speak about a lot of things, so I can't say we won't speak specifically about planning boards.
Yeah.
That'd be a bore.
It's a pretty wide range.
As an associate?
It's still a member. So, anyway, so that's the ZBA rap and one of the at-large members that's been able to attend, so...
Yeah, I, I wish I could, I could join it, we didn't have to worry about it. Let me get a waiver.
It's posted as a dual meeting each time.
Yeah, all right. Updates or anything else, legal documents, anything?
Nope, if you have anything else. We got some minutes.
All good on the scenic road stuff going to town meeting?
Yep, there's been no objection from the selectmen or the finance committee.
Sweet.
Haven't heard anything otherwise, so...
That's be easy.
Yeah, that's, that's quite an easy one.
Yeah.
Um, anyone have a chance to review the minutes?
I didn't.
Did not?
I didn't.
You did.
So I just have two updates. And number one, Dan Dunleavy, the applicant, is purchasing a piece of land from his neighbor, versus off his neighbor. Sound a little more formal. And then...
I don't have them.
Number two, uh, one, two, three, four lines down, over them based on the peer review made by, just suggest completed by Kevin Quinn. I didn't see anything else.
Number seven. Sleepy Hollow?
Oh, Sleepy Hollow, yep.
Just a typo.
Oh, and then number eight, some items to consider are...
Matt, going back on the subdivision plan. Are we gonna be looking at it where we've had, where Sleepy Hollow became an issue with earth removal and the lots and the road all being done at the same time? Where...
It's kinda tricky, because the subdivision governs the road, not the lots.
Right.
The lots are their own creatures, so that's why he needed earth removal for those.
Right, but what happened was, you do the earth removal at one setback, lots, and then around another setback. So it's a double deception on what's really going on.
Yeah.
Which is wrong, I think. It should all be done, in my opinion, one time, one shot, so everybody knows, and the layout is all known at the same time.
Yeah.
Or is that just physically not possible?
I don't think it's possible, because once the lots are laid out, they're, does that mean? Yeah, once the lots are laid out on a plan, and the road is accepted, and there's a bond in place, and they start releasing the lots, those are outside of the subdivision controls. And they're, they're allowed to create those as needed, and once they reach that 300 cubic yard threshold, they're gonna trigger an earth removal.
Right, so...
Lot release thing, where it's outside of the subdivision. That we just talked about.
I mean, don't get me wrong, it's kind of a unique situation, but we might see it again.
Oh, yeah, it's possible.
And that really, in a way, turned into a nightmare.
Yeah, well, because his earth removal wasn't incidental to the building, it was for his yard. And so it wasn't exempt under the earth removal.
Right, which we all understood.
Yep.
But it came to the situation where, this week you're at 100 feet, next week you're at 50 feet or 10 feet.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely. It's, it's an issue that we have to adjust with our earth removal bylaw. And I started drafting that, what, a couple of years ago when this came out, but it's, it's something that kinda fell off our radar, I can start it back up again. But I started adding fill to it, and then it really got messy.
Right, that's why I'm saying, I think we should stay with the earth removal.
Okay.
Like you said, it can get real messy, real ugly, real quick.
Yep.
All right, I just wanna go back to the minutes, just to get this over and done with. There were a couple of changes. I have, let's see, one, at the very end, motion to adjourn me by Mike Zucker.
Mick?
Yeah, other than that, I don't care to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes, but...
I'll take someone's copy.
All right, that's, I'll go through again. Uh, where, where'd you have some, or did you have, I guess? All right.
You can just have mine.
All right, I'll have to take, to accept the meeting minutes, um, as amended, for October 9th.
So moved?
Second.
Made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Rose, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Neanimous?
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, I just, I just like the format, has it changed up a bit? It seems to be more succinct.
Mm-hmm.
And the way it's broken down, it just seems easy to read. I don't know if you've made some changes, or I'm imagining it, but it seems, uh...
It's just different than Linda's for master plan, I think. Different minutes taker, right?
This is also a nice short meeting, so maybe... All right, do you have anything else for us, Matt?
Nope, I don't think so.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, made by Mrs. Wicker.
Second.
Made by Mr. Schlossman, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Neanimous, adjourned.